Good evening, it's six thirty now, I would like to call the April fifteenth twenty twenty-five C D council meeting to order. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the numbers printed on the agenda, which can be found on the C D's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov, or in persons, Main Auditorium, South Coast Air Quality Management District. We have also allowed the public comments to be submitted in advance to the C D clerk. If any were received, they will be noted for the record when we get to the public comment period. This meeting is being recorded and by participating, you are given your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at nine A M. And alternate Tuesday at eight P M. And archived for viewing on the C D's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov. Now, we're going to proceed with the pledge of allegiance, invocation, and roll call. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by council member Lo. And then, please stand up.
Please rise, face the flag, right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Tino Codova, United Church of Christ.
Creator, as we gather in this council meeting during Holy Week, we pause to acknowledge your presence among us. We thank you for the opportunity to partner with these council leaders to serve our community and seek your wisdom in our decisions and discussions. May our words be guided by truth, our actions by justice, and our hearts by compassion. Help us to work together in unity, setting aside differences to focus on the greater good. As we reflect on the sacrifice and love of Christ, may we be reminded of the importance of humility, service, and grace. Bless our city, bless our leaders, bless our people, and grant us strength to lead with integrity and wisdom. In your many and holy names, we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Codova. Now, please be seated. C D clerk Santana, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council member Chow.
Present.
Council member Lou is absent, council member Lo.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Thai.
Here.
Mayor Tang.
Here, thank you.
Next session is the C D Attorney's Report. C D Attorney send over, are there any reportable action from the closed session today?
Yes, Mayor, the City Council did meet in closed session earlier today, and there is reportable action at the closed session. The City Council unanimously authorized counsel to commence, to initiate receivership proceedings for the property located at twenty-three eight thirty-six Twin Pines. And that is the action today. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, C D Attorney. C D manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. The agenda is hereby approved. Now, next we have a special presentation, certificate, and proclamations. First, we'll have a certificate of recognition to Diamond Ranch High School Boys Basketball Team. Diamond Ranch High School Boys Basketball Team, including Athletic Director Dennis Dunn, will accept the certificate. They recently won the regional championship. So, the basketball team, the coaches, please come to the front. They help me to. So, the coach, where's, coach, coach? Coach, come in here. Superintendent, come in. Coach, congratulations for the achievement of your team. You want to say a few words to the C D?
I'm very excited for these kids and very proud of what they accomplished this year for, you know, our area. All homegrown kids, no one from out of the city, out of the state. So, they all grew up together, they all worked together all year and accomplished something great.
And they listen to you.
Sometimes.
Thank you much. Pomona Valley School Board and Superintendent, please come to the front too. It's the honor of your school district, okay? Come here, say a few words.
Well, actually, I'm going to pass it off to some basketball players because they could better describe their team than I can. But before we get started, I really wanted to thank the city for recognizing these kids' accomplishments. It's really been a Cinderella team. I wasn't able to go to a lot of the regional play, but we had some first texting going back and forth all through. We knew up to minute what you guys were doing, and it was pretty exciting. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to turn it over to Presley or who's ever going to speak first.
Come to the front.
Are they all, you're all not going to say something?
Well, you represent your team, okay, go ahead.
It was a great season, it was fun playing, obviously. I'm just glad we made it really far. I don't think anyone really believed we could do that. So, it was nice proving everyone wrong.
Thank you. Do you mean?
Exactly what he said, you know, it was really, really hard to get to at this point. Because I even told my coach in the beginning of this year, we're not going to get that far. We're not, like, it's going to be hard, but, you know. I listened to him, you know, everyone plays together as a team. Like, we're at the Diamond Bar City Council meeting, somewhere.
And I'm the proud superintendent for the Pomona Unified School District. And I want to thank our parents that are also here and supportive. I want to thank the City Council for Diamond Bar. You guys were phenomenal, you've always been supportive. I did get an opportunity to watch them in the regional and watch them as they played a few games in the playoffs. And Principal Gomez, he's awesome too. And I didn't miss the opportunity to go to Sacramento and watch them in the championship game. You guys played your hearts out, it was phenomenal and great job. You guys had a lot of grit, and we almost got there. We made that run in that fourth quarter, we were up eleven points at halftime. We had a rough third quarter, but then that fourth quarter, we were making a run at it. And they played, they played great, they made us proud.
Excellent, excellent. It's a proud of us city, and it's joy. And we're very glad you guys are here. So, we have a certificate for the coach and for the team.
Yeah, why don't you give it to him to handle it?
Yeah. Kim Allen. Peter Casillas. Ray Fukuyama. Not here, Philip Macias. Presley Mondragon.
Yeah, yeah, right there, right here.
Jaden Pullian. Robert Rucker. Michael Salazar. J.J. Salaby.
Right on.
Debbie Turner. Justin Wilson. Kevin Ryan. John Ryan. Dante Washington. Well, congratulations. Who have the principal, Principal Gomez? Please say a few words.
Oh, okay. What I will say is, at Diamond Ranch, I talk about this with my staff a lot, that concept of community and building community. I think this season was certainly a community builder for our entire campus and our entire community, Diamond Bar, Pomona. I said this multiple times, you represented us very well. Going to Sacramento with Mr. Knowles, I was having a lot of conversations with C I F officials and just passerby's. There were alumni at Diamond Ranch, I don't know if you, I don't know if you guys know this, but there were alumni at Diamond Ranch that went to Sacramento, that lived around the area, but they wanted to come just to see you guys play. Yeah, and I spoke with a few of them. And there was a C I F official that was behind me the entire time, and he just kept on asking questions. These guys are from Pomona, yes, this is a public school, yes. And Diamond Bar. Point being, is that when you get to that high elite level at the state level, the competition is, I had a conversation with Coach Ryan about this. To put it frankly, you're talking about private school kids, kids that have been like in club leveling and all the way through that have been at it. But these are homegrown kids from the area. Again, I can't trust this enough, they've represented us extremely well. They represented our community extremely well. I'm looking forward to next season. We have some great returners coming back. I'm sad to see our seniors go, love them to death. But looking forward to, looking forward to next season and beyond. Because again, what you've accomplished is not just this year. You've built a program that we're going to build upon, you know, year after year after year after year. And no matter what, like, records are meant to be broken. But that championship, it will stay with you forever, absolutely forever. I do want to give a quick shout out to the parents because this is by far our most strongest community, our most strongest team, so to speak. So, they stepped up to the plate, top to bottom, so kudos to the parents, yeah. What do you mean? Oh, yeah, 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 so a little bit of some history. So, we had an overall record of eight and two in the postseason. And it kind of speaks to the resilience getting into the playoffs to begin with. We were an at-large bid, and we got in, we did like our bracket. I had conversations with Mr. Dunn about this. Our only two losses, and I had a conversation with Mr. Salazar about this, which was really poignant. The only two losses were in the finals, the section finals and the state finals. And that tells you something, right? That tells you the level in which we played. We lost against Kaiser High School in the finals, in section finals. And Coach Ryan was chomping at the bit, Mike was chomping at the bit, like, we want to see them again, we want to have that rematch. And we had that rematch, we beat them. So, that was like a huge load off our back, but the job's not done. Quote, Lake Great, Kobe Bryant, job's not finished. We made it to, you know, our section regionals, our state regionals. We won that at home, crowd was electric, and then we, you know, punched a ticket to state. And to have that experience in Sacramento, that's the stuff that you just, you know, thirty years down the line, you're going to remember that stuff, you know. So, again, overall, great experience, Cinderella season, as Ms. Thai mentioned. And again, like, looking forward to doing it year after year after year. But thank you, everyone.
Thank you. So, team, coaches, and superintendent, board. State championship next year, right? Yeah, okay. Any of the council member want to speak something? Yeah, you're good. So, let's have a photo session.
Tall people in the back.
Tall people in the back. We are short, we are short. More tall players come to this side. Left sided. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you again, thank you so much.
All right, proclamation right there. The water boys here, water boys, right. Okay, we continue to have a proclamation declaring May twenty twenty-five as Water Awareness Month. Directors, I see Scarlett Quandt and Teresa Lee from the Warner Valley Water District are here to accept the proclamation. Please come over here. Welcome, honorable directors. Madam President, directors. This month is Water Awareness Month. May, may well be. What can you tell the city about water awareness? Can you say something?
Thank you. First of all, thank you very much for having this proclamation, making May the Water Month. We wanted to thank the city of Diamond Bar and the citizens for conserving water all these years. Continue the good job, and hopefully, we will get more rain this year.
Oh, okay, thank you so much. Well, anyway, so again, I echo our Madam President of like the consistent water-saving strategies that our neighbors, our communities is practicing. And of course, this is going to be a continuously a lifestyle going forward. And of course, our job is to maintain our water quality and make sure that our resources is going to be stable. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and you want to make sure that our firefighter has enough water. That's important, okay. Now, we have the proclamation presented to you. Photo? Okay, we'll continue our meeting with the San Gabriel Valley Council of Government fifty-seven sixty Confluence Project Update. Renee Cornell with the Southern California, Southern Gabriel Valley Council of Government will present a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Renee Cornell with the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. Today, I'm joined by Kevin Lai, our Director of Capital Projects, and Aurelio Marquez, our Outreach Coordinator. So, thank you for having me again. I think this is my third or fourth time here, so hopefully, it goes better than last time. So, I'll give a quick project update on the fifty-seven sixty. As a quick overview of the project, it is a five-year project. We are two years in, we're scheduled to be complete in July of twenty twenty-eight. To categorize this project, I'm just going to categorize it as four bridges. The first bridge, which is nearly complete, and I'll go over, is just outside of the city hall. It's a Golden Springs Undercrossing Bridge. To the east of that or north of that, is the new bridge that will take commuters from the sixty off to Grand Avenue to avoid the merging with the traffic. The third bridge is going to be the new Grand Avenue Bridge, that's going to be reconstructed. And lastly, to the east is, will be the eastbound S R sixty bypass biaduct. That bridge will be for commuters who are getting off, getting onto the freeway from Grand Avenue. And if they can make it to the sixty all the way up to the left, they can take the biaduct bridge to go to the sixty, similar to what we have heading towards Brea and Pomona, and I'm sorry, City of Industry. So, current progress for Golden Springs Drive. Utilities have been relocated, three thousand feet of sanitary sewer line has been installed. And when you drive out there, you can see where it's been installed. Rest, other water lines and miscellaneous frontier communications have also been relocated. And what you see there, in the middle of the picture, that is the new Golden Springs Drive Bridge. If you drive through the area, you drive under it, there's phosphoric supporting that bridge. So, in the next month, what we'll do is we're going to stress the bridge. That's the last part of completing the bridge, and then we can start removing some of the false work underneath it that supports it. The pour went great, we had several Caltrans staff attend. It's one of the recent bridge pours we've done, so everybody wanted to see how we did it. So, in the next coming days, you'll see a bunch of Caltrans folks out there, and we're stressing the bridge, basically getting the steel, stretching it so it compresses the bridge, therefore allows us to put weight on it. So, in the next coming months, what we're going to do is complete the bridge, which should be done by the end of this month, and do the remaining civil work, which is roadway work. The eastbound S R sixty Grand Avenue Bypass Bridge. As a reminder, once complete, this bridge will take motorists from the sixty off to Grand Avenue. You will still be able to go on both freeways, the confluence, and get off on Grand, but this is much easier, you just get on the bridge and it takes you over Grand Avenue. We've been able to cut the slope outside of the Aries parking lot. We're supporting the We're supporting the soil. And what you see there is that big rig is driving piles thirty feet into the ground. That's the foundation for the retaining wall. Further up the picture, you see we're starting forming the footing. And the next coming week, you're going to see tall rebar sticking out of that, out of that floor, and it's going to be the retaining wall that's going to support that parking lot and the Aries lot. Grand Avenue Reconfiguration, that's a schematic of what it looks like in the future. You can see the horseshoe that will be the new on-ramp to the freeway. Lot of the grading has been done. Edison just completed the relocations. And this coming month in May, we will be doing a large traffic shift and closure, which I'm going to go into more detail. But it's good that we've been able to relocate the utilities. So in the next coming month, we're going to be shifting traffic back and forth to allow us to, to shift traffic towards the west, allow us to demo the existing bridge, and allow us to construct the new bridge. So this upcoming, upcoming weekend closure, it is basically going to start on May second at seven P M. and will end Monday, May fifth at six A M. It is a fifty-nine hour closure, so we will be working around the clock on weekends, overtime, to allow us to complete this work. The shaded area in red shows the construction zone. So the off-ramp to Grand Avenue will be closed for the entire weekend, as well as southbound traffic from City of Industry heading into Diamond Bar, that will be closed. Northbound traffic, which you can see in the picture is not highlighted, that will be open. Pedestrian access will be open during the weekend closure, but it's going to be crews stacked on top of crews finishing the work, excavating, demoing, installing new pavement, and allowing the pavement to reach its strength. In terms of detours, there will be two detours that motorists can follow. For the grand detour, it will be heading down to Valley Boulevard to Temple and down to Diamond Bar. And for commuters on the freeway, it will be getting off on Brea Canyon Road or the next exit, which is Diamond Bar Boulevard. Community outreach, as always, we try to inform the local residents by knocking door to door and posting on our social media sites of the closures. And this what we'll be up doing in the coming weeks, we'll be putting up the traffic message signs, as well as knocking door to door and letting people know we're closing for the weekend, it's just the southbound traffic. Those are our ways of staying in touch with us. And if you scan the QR code, there's a Google Sheet, you can sign up for updates on the project. As always, you can find more information on our website, and at any time, we're willing to answer any questions. And that's it for the update and upcoming closure. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Is any question?
Renee, thanks very much. I appreciate that. I love seeing this stuff because I'm more confused every time I look at it. Could you show us the first slide that has to do with Golden Springs?
Yes. The overall or when the actual aerial photo?
Aerial photo.
Okay, let me see if I can scale. Okay, here we go.
Okay, so I thought all this time that that was going to be an additional lane where there are now, I think, two coming, or three, coming from the northbound fifty-seven. Is that not what that's for?
So the way, the way this area works is you have three lanes coming in from the fifty-seven, which you see there. It will be three lanes once it's done. What we're doing is we're shifting traffic further, closer to Diamond Bar, further to the east. As you head northbound, traffic will be pushed this way. And this ties up to the Aries Parking Lot. So traffic will be just that vertical wall you see, that will be where the fifty-seven traffic will be shifted towards. So what we're doing right now is we're making the area bigger by widening that bridge, that section of the fifty-seven. It will still be three lanes once it's said and done.
Okay, so then what's that lane for if it's not the fourth lane? Where's that taking me? I know I'm going eastbound, but where am I getting off or am I staying on the fifty-seven sixty?
So this will push you closer to that retaining wall that you see, towards the Aries Parking Lot. That's where that will take you. The reason it's taking you there is because we got to make lane for an extra lane. Once we're in the confluence, there will be an extra lane. As it, as it stands, there are seven lanes. Once it, once we're completed, it will be eight lanes. So we're just, we're slowly shifting traffic further to the east to allow for that extra lane.
Gotcha, okay. And then when, if you want another the Grand Avenue where if I, if I understand what I'm looking at, I can make, coming from City of Industry, I can make a right-hand turn and get on going eastbound on the sixty or the fifty-seven.
That is correct.
What about the traffic on what now is it just a bottleneck where they turn left to get onto the freeway? Will that be no left turn?
On the bridge, right now, if you're head, if you're heading this way, you can't head any further, so you're going to have to either do a U-turn or head towards northbound fifty-seven, eastbound sixty.
What I'm asking about is today, if you and I came from City of Industry and we wanted to go eastbound on the sixty, we would have to turn left where the golf course is. Will that be no left turn?
No, not no left turn.
So it'll still be a left turn and you can turn right on what we're building?
Let me, let me rephrase this. Are you saying once, once we're done, after this closure, that, that on-ramp still will not be open? It will be similar to what is existing right now. We still have to make our way with the other traffic shifts to allow us to make a right onto eastbound sixty.
Right, and so I guess what I'm saying is in twenty twenty-eight, will you be able to make that left turn from Grand Avenue onto the fifty-seven sixty freeway? It'll be no, it'll be no left turn.
No, because you're going to have to go to the right.
Good, okay. That's excellent. Thank you, I appreciate your help.
Any other question?
I have a question there. Same, same picture, the first one that you, on Golden Spring, yeah, go back a few slides if you don't mind. Yeah, right there, okay. So, you know, I drive that street every day. So under the, the new bypass lane, or I don't know what you call that, but the new additional lane, below is Golden Spring that used to be, you know, there's a median, there's streets on both sides, so obviously this side, now the bridge is too low to pass through. So are we turning that stretch of Golden Spring into one lane?
So what we're going to do is we're going to finish the bridge, get rid of all that steel beams and where that you see. Then we have to rebuild the portion of Golden Springs Drive underneath it. It's going to be lower. So once the project is done, that portion will be up here and Golden Springs will be down here.
Oh, there's enough clearance? It seems so low right now.
It, it seems, we're, it's, it's going to, we're still have to excavate to go down lower, so it's going to be much, much lower than what it is right now. So, yeah, right now, if you, if you were to follow the same path, you, you, you don't have the vertical clearance.
Right.
So the street's going to be lower. Once the project is complete, it's going to be, what you're driving through is going to be up here and the other, what do we call it? Let's call it northbound, it's going to be much lower.
Got it, thank you.
No more questions? Then thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the City Manager's Report and Recommendation. City Manager Fox, are there any reports?
No additional reports this evening.
Next is the Public Comments. Public Comments is the time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the council on concerned calendars items or other matters of interest not on the agenda that are within the subject matters jurisdiction of the council. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no actions on such matters may take place. There is a five minutes maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted a speaker card first, then City Clerk Santana will ask for those callers during the teleconference who may wish to speak on the public comments. I have received a speaker card from Cynthia Yu.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Poten, council members, city staff, and members of audience. My name is Cynthia Yu from Diamond Bar Library. Join us for special cherry blossoms, watercolor art this Thursday, April seventeenth at eleven. It is an hour of guided watercolor painting where your stress will melt away as you create a work of art. We'll have a play and explore session for you and your little one ages zero to four this Saturday, April nineteenth at ten thirty. Bring your curiosity and enjoy a special type of books, rhymes, followed by playtime with an assortment of fun toys and activities. Saturday, April twenty-sixth at ten thirty, join Evan Griffith, author of these years' Read Together Diamond Bar Children's Book Selection, The Strange Wonders of Roots, for an illuminating writing workshop just for kids ages eight to twelve. We'll meet the author Evan Griffith again in the afternoon of April twenty-sixth. Miss Griffith, his book have received multiple star reviews nominated to several state reading lists and recognized as Junior Library Guide Golden Standard Selections. He will share stories of his books, work, and writing process. After that, we'll award the prizes for the winners of this year's How a Book Changed Your Life, Changed My Life, a contest. Please join us for this exciting event. Did you know that Diamond Bar Library will be one of L K, L A County Library's Sea Landing locations? You can check out seeds from our sea library and bring the beauty of nature into your home. Our sea library include, will include herbs, vegetable, and drought tolerant wildflowers. Please stop by the library to pick up some seeds. And our sea library will also be available at the city's Earth Day Celebration this Saturday, April nineteenth. Please visit our booth and explore our services and programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card came from Patricia Aguilar.
Good evening, council leaders. My name is Patricia and I reside at two-three-eight-four-six Twin Pines Lane in Diamond Bar. I am addressing, addressing the council concerning the neighboring property at two-three-eight-three-six Twin Pines Lane, which suffered a fire on January the twenty-fifth this year at ten thirty in the morning. We actually called nine-one-one. I want to share a couple of key issues. The house sustained significant fire damage resulting in multiple holes in the roof. Firefighters, firefighters found a large accumulation of garbage in the garage. Heavy rains in the following months likely caused water accumulation inside the house, leading to potential mold growth. The city boarded up the property on April second this year, but the roof remains exposed, allowing dust, ashes, and possible mold spores to spread to nearby homes. Garbage remains in the garage, attracting rats, which we have seen, and rat droppings, creating health hazards. The yard is cluttered with debris and dead branches posing fire risks. Our concerns: health risks due to the mold spores and ashes potentially spreading to neighboring homes, which we have seen, affecting our respiratory systems. Increased presence of rats and rat droppings leading to potential infectious diseases. Unsafe conditions for residents, including our children who play outside. What we are here to request, here's my neighbors, I along with neighbors kindly request your help, that is immediate action to remove the trash and treat the rat infestation. Remove ashes and treat or test for mold inside the property. Removal of debris and dead branches from the yard to prevent fires. Address health and safety concerns to prevent illness and improve our living conditions. Completion of these tasks in a timely manner. Thank you for your attention to this serious matter. Any questions?
Thank you. City is working on this issue, so if you have any further communication, you can talk with our community development director, Mr. Gregman, okay? And he and his team will work with the neighbors to try to solve the problem. Thank you.
Can I have the name again?
Mr. Greg Germain.
And I did submit a folder with pictures, oh, great, with photos, so, thank you.
City Clerk Santana, is any public comments emails received or is needed callers on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, there were no emails submitted for public comment. If any member of the public joining this meeting via teleconference would like to address the city council, please select the raised hand icon in your go-to webinar program now. And there are no hands raised, Mayor.
Captain Towsie?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, Captain Steve Towsie. Just a quick update on our residential burglary problem that we are currently in the midst of. I just did some quick searches before I came to this meeting and just to give you an update of where we're at. So in February, we had thirty-four burglaries, seventeen of which were residential. In March, we had thirty-seven burglaries, seventeen of which were residential. And so far in April, we've had eleven burglaries and only three residential. So not that things follow patterns, but if they did, that would be, we're halfway through the month, so that would be six residential compared to seventeen for the previous two months. So, you know, not, not promising that it's going to, it's going to match that. The three doesn't always become three again, but we are making headway when it comes to the residential burglaries. One thing I do want to point out to the citizens, however, is we had similar rises, or similar raises in the, in the burglaries in Roland Heights. And in the last fifteen days in Roland Heights, the burglaries, actually over the last month, the burglaries also went down in Roland Heights, but what I'm seeing now is vehicle burglaries are very high. So when we take deputies and we move them around, so we, we adjust schedules and have them drive around the residential neighborhoods, that opens up the commercial areas. So what I'm asking the residents to do is make sure not to leave any valuables inside of their cars when they, when they park and to be vigilant in the parking lots, because I don't want to see that same thing happen here in Diamond Bar. But what I would normally expect, what the, what the statistics say is we should not see more than eighteen vehicle burgs in Roland Heights, and we're at thirty-eight. So they're hitting multiple times in the same night, so the same car is being seen on camera, hitting three, four, or five cars in a parking lot. So as we drive around the residential areas, keeping the residential burgs, burglaries down, I don't want to see a spike in the vehicle burglary. So please, for the residents, make sure you're parking, you're looking through the parking lots, you're not leaving any valuables in the vehicles. That's all I have.
Mayor, just one quick comment, Captain, just want to tell you that your, your actions, your presence is appreciated, is felt throughout the city. I speak to you and I hear a lot from residents, and it's noticeably more presence of police around the neighborhood, so I think that has a lot to do with the, the sharp decline in home burglary. So thank you for all you do, please let your deputies know that we appreciate them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question from? Thank you, Captain Towsie. If there's no other person come, willing to speak to the council, we'll close the public comment session. Now we'll move on to schedule of future events and the concerned calendar. City Manager Fox, can you please announce the schedule of the upcoming events and then proceed with the concerned calendar?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On the schedule of events, to celebrate thirty-six years of cityhood, the Windmill Hunt continues at various parks and city facilities through the end of the month. Please register with our Parks and Recreation Department on the city's website. A Healthy Diamond Bar Event and Arbor Day Tree Planting will take place tomorrow morning, April sixteenth, from nine to ten A M. at Larkstone Park. And our Annual Earth Day Event will take place on Saturday, April nineteenth, between nine A M. and two P M. here in the AQMB Parking Lot. The Planning Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-second, starting at six-thirty P M. in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. Coffee with the Cop will be held on Wednesday evening, April twenty-third, from six to eight P M. at the Starbucks in the Plaza at Diamond Creek on Golden Springs. Our next public, our next Meet Your Public Safety Service Providers Event will be held on Wednesday, April thirtieth, from six to eight P M. in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. And our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, May sixth. And our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 6th, at 6:30 p.m. here in the AQMD Auditorium. On the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of the April 1st regular meeting minutes, approval of the check register dated April 1st through March 19th, excuse me, through, March 19th through April 1st, adoption of Resolution 2025-12 designating authorized agents and authorizing a local hazard mitigation grant application, and approval of consultant services agreement with David Vols designed to inventory city landscaped areas for the application of recovered organic waste products, and adoption of a proclamation declaring April 25th as Arbor Day. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you for the report. Would anyone like to put any items for discussion? If none, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move for approval.
A second?
So we have a motion and we have a second. City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu is absent. Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Tang?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Next session is a public hearing. There's no public hearing items on tonight's agenda. We'll move on to the council consideration. There's also no council consideration items on tonight's agenda. Next session is council subcommittee report and meeting attendance report, council members' comments. And we are going to start with my right side council member, Andrew Chow.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, I had an opportunity to attend the third annual Housing Policy Symposium hosted by the Rhodes Institute at the Pomona College, well, Claremont McKenna College at Pomona Colleges. We heard from a number of elected officials. OC, Orange County Supervisor Katrina Foley, along with Sonoma County Supervisor James Gore, who spoke on their response to the fire that happened up there some time ago. It was interesting to hear from Supervisor Foley about what they're doing in Orange County in terms of the efforts to promote more production. She actually surprisingly advocated for kind of cutting back on sequel requirements and parking requirements. So there's some pretty innovative things they're doing in Orange County that I thought be good to share with all of you. So I'll send out an email in a little bit with a couple tips that she shared. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lo?
Thank you, Mayor. This period, I attended the Capital Projects Committee. And we heard about that today from the San Gabriel Valley COG. And we talked about how the progress of the 5760 is progressing. I also attended the Vector Control Meeting. And Mayor and I attended a briefing hosted by the Cal Cities Organization, the LA Division. And it was a briefing from Los Angeles County District Attorney Nathan Hockman and San Diego District Attorney T N Hole. So it was really sharing about what they are doing to implement Prop 36, of course, which passed overwhelmingly in November of 2024. And we just learned about all the innovative ways how this new law is helping to reduce theft and fentanyl overdoses and just the importation of fentanyl and just the problems. However, we were not happy to learn that the state of California has not funded this proposition. So even though the people in the state of California voted to implement this, our leaders in Sacramento have not made this an item on their budget. So as a council and really as citizens, we need to address that. And we hope to be working toward that in the upcoming months. And to our friends and neighbors who are celebrating Easter this coming weekend, I just wish everyone a happy Easter and a very good week. With that, I'll thank you and say good night.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Tai?
Thank you, Mayor. Back to Councilman Lo, will that require, do we think, another initiative? How do we leave that open? Closed?
Well, you know, we passed the law, but it's got to be funded. It's like saying, go get groceries, but you don't put money in the wallet. Can't happen. And that's kind of where we're at.
All right. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that information. Again, congratulations to Diamond Ranch High School Boys Basketball Team. I can tell you, I can count on one hand the number of times Mrs. Tai has been here. And it was here to say good things about the school and good things about the kids. And I'm glad she was here along with Superintendent and one of her other board members, Roberta Pearlman, to, again, congratulate the kids. It's no small achievement that they have been part of. So, you know, it could be worse. It could have been Houston, right? It could have been Duke, but they got that far and it's very exciting for them. So congratulations to those guys. Last week, had the opportunity with Councilman Chow to be at Dean Holmes' annual board meeting and talk to the folks and listen to what they had to say to us, a lot of questions that they had. And that's how things get done, just like the folks here from Twin Pines. The homeowners that came in to say, hey, we need your help. And that's how things get done. So we look forward to that being finally, after a fire in late January, that it will be addressed. And we hope for expedience and looking forward to the results. Thanks. Have a very happy Easter and God bless you.
Thank you. For the meeting that Councilmember Lo and me attended, the meeting about the Proposition 36 implementation, I have two points to add. The one point is the DA from Sacramento mentioned that they were able to arrest or arrest some offenders by their so-called facial recognition system. So I think that's something worth looking to. Because for the burglaries in this area, I believe that there are times that the offenders' facial face were captured on the surveillance system. So I hope that those civilians will be able to help the law enforcement to catch them. Okay, that's the first thing. The second thing is that from the comments of the LA Sheriff Chief Luna and from the Los Angeles District Attorney Huchman, Mr. Huchman, I feel that our county supervisor or the people in charge of the county, they are, I don't know what's their mind. Because they mentioned that they are going to, they are going to stop, they are going to eliminate the central men's jail. They're going to close a lot of facilities, but they have no intention to open more. And there's a group of active activists lobby them to close all these facilities. And the county supervisor listened to them. And so the message from Luna and from Huchman is that we, as a community, need to be better involved. We need to voice our concern to the supervisor so they can allocate more money, right? So that to implement Proposition 36. So I was wondering, because both our highest-ranked sheriff, Mr. Luna, and our district attorney, our elected district attorney, Mr. Huchman, they all went to the county supervisors' meeting in person. They all personally speak about the concern for the closing of the jail. But the county supervisors do not listen to them. So they are coming back to the community to ask us for more support. So I just don't get them because they're two highest-ranking law enforcement people there to voice our concern and they don't listen to them. So I just don't get it. But now I think we are waiting for Mr. Huchman's office. They promised to give us some kind of like a template, an email, so that we can use to send our concerns. And we can also ask our resident to send concerns. We can have the council members, CDs, to send our concerns to make our voice heard so that they will allocate more money to have those facilities, not only for the jails, but also for the mental problem. Because a lot of the, a lot of problems are from mental people, right? But they don't have enough facility for housing them. So we are waiting for Mr. Huchman's office to give us some more samples of a template. So at that time, I will probably ask all our council members to help to write the letters to the county supervisor. Okay, so that's my report. And also, by the way, tomorrow, there's going to be tree plantings for the Arbor Day. So everybody, please go to the park to do the tree planting with us, 9:00 o'clock in the morning. So hopefully we'll see everybody there tomorrow for tree planting. Thank you for the attendance. Thank you for the meeting today. Good night.